United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Brandon Kane, Baker Park, Ghost Street. In terms of Waste Pro, I just want to say that I know we're still in the normal annual, you know, looking at the contract with them, and I know there's been a lot of problems. And Cal has been recently posted in April, pretty much since the beginning of April. They miss my yard waste forty to fifty percent of the time since September. So this isn't like just a new issue for us, but they're missing a lot on my street and whatever. I know that will be recorded, we record it directly in Waste Pro, so I'm curious in the annual update, if the town gets information about how many complaints Waste Pro is getting from residents? Because I feel like there might be a disconnect if the town isn't aware of how many people were having problems. That's an issue. I actually found out at the beginning of April before the now, because I was calling a complaint to Waste Pro when I talked to a district manager, that the reason for it, I was told, was that there was a problem with the landfill. That the landfills were full and they didn't have anywhere to take the trash. And that it wasn't just yard waste, that it was additional waste as well, which turned into quite a snowball of a problem. I know that there was another statement made to the town, this is the reason why I forget what it is now, but I talked to the district manager twice for the whole Central Florida area and that's why it was full. I used to live in New Jersey and work in New York City, so I know they shipped their trash off to somewhere else. So it will be honest to say, I told the Waste Pro guy that we contracted with you as a resident, I don't have choice. We have to go with Waste Pro because that's who the town chooses. But if they're gonna have a continual problem, we might need to look into contracts with other waste services, where they need to target further, because we can't accept trash to our climate now and not get stuff picked up. So I've encouraged all my neighbors that I have problems to call in and complain to. And unfortunately to the town as well, because the town doesn't know what's happening, not going to be resolved. If Waste Pro just said, "We'll come another day, we'll come another day."
And when nineteen eighty?
First of all, given honor, I'm always pleased to be in a place where people are trying to do the right things, right for their city and for the nation. Just to give you a brief overview, I moved here in 2004. I am a Windmerean. I lived here for eleven of the last sixteen years and moved over to Bayou Elking. For a short period of time, I got deported to Rattan, Afghanistan. Came back, moved back to Windmere over Little Lake Sawyer, and recently moved back to Bayou next to Colman. But I'm still home when I go to church, where I'm a member as a deacon and as a member of the choir. And so this is my home, and I'm happy to be part of this community. Along my wife, Suzie, who's been with me forty-five years, and pulled down here to rise above my circumstances. As things began to change in our nation. Just to give you guys a little bit of background, I was born in Maryland, Baltimore, Indiana. Back in the day, Forest of Rice Act, there were some places that I couldn't go and things I wanted to do with my parents' homes, so we never give up, never give in, rise above your circumstances. I kept that model in my head all my life. And I was able to work away through college, got my degree, got commissioned second lieutenant, went to the Second Airborne Initiative, went to the Special Forces on Green Beret. So Mike Walsh, he's not the only one that's in Congress, that's hopefully out in Mexico in that way. And was a helicopter pilot as well as a military intelligence officer. And over thirty-three years was combined with fourteen and a half years in active duty with the reserves and guard. But also had the opportunity to work on my master's degree in information systems, computer technology, on to get my master's in teaching leadership. And I was able to get in the corporate America, take those transferable skills that those that are certain of you to take and apply those to everything, to teaching JLT, CNI school. Last fall, we also have a visible example of what caused those to bend the young fall. When you leave the park area, we did not want those to be at our care, so unfortunately to me, that's what happened. When you take your combatants out and leave noncombatants, the men, women took care of our lives, fed us, did our laundry, kept the streets clean, and you leave them behind. Unfortunately, that was a critical moment in my life, especially when I saw commandos, some of which I had traded. And I carried a coin in my wallet, this commando coin that I got from them, the commandos, which were included to our Green Berets. Who told me they were glad they came and talked on what they needed to do, or that's how they met. But soon they'd murder on TV and then see those thirteen young men who died, in my opinion, either. That was a wake-up call, praying on it, I already retired, three times ago, I said, "Well, one more time to go to work." One o'clock in the morning, back in October, I applied to Tallahassee. Went out on three months, three weeks, got my petition signed, and was officially eligible to be on the ballot for Orange County. As we all know, two weeks ago, the county lines changed a little bit. I'm still a Windmerean, okay? But nonetheless, Orange County is Orange County. And I decided to rise above my circumstances, see what can I give back to our community. Things are going south for us. Inflation is taking a grip on all of us, regardless of where you're from, where you started, what your socioeconomic status has been, it is. But I wanted to believe that if we all start working together, then I'll come back on a small compass. It's going back to God, because God hates him out of everything. He would include the school where I tried to teach, and they didn't like to use the word God, they didn't want to talk about everything else. That's not right. And at that point in time, I said, "What can I do to be the man to measure up to what the plan used to be?" So I chose to step up as a Christian conservative constitutionist, and I believe God can be constant. And that's what I think is missing also, a lot of the people who have chosen to be politicians. I'm not going there to be a politician. I'm a citizen who loves this America. I salute that flag, and I love that I salute all those stuff that fly, that we willing to die for, if needed. And that's what I did, went on Star Recipent in Afghanistan, and I have other decorations I could go on for hours with, but I'm not gonna go there. But what I understand, this is your country, this is my country, we need to stand up for what is right. So I looked at the needs of this community, and I talked to ten thousand people in those three thousand positions. And I was surprised, I was really glad that when I thought this was a career topic issue, the economy, education, and then energy independence, it's gone. We're all suffering from what we see, inflation right now. Two and a half years ago, we all had about a dollar fifty cents a gallon for the regular. Diesel was two fifty, I own a truck, and I own an electric car, and I have a car. But now at four dollars and forty-seven cents, the highest ever been in the nation. The GDP dropping one point four percent, this is now since the week. With the price of crude oil, which used to be forty-five dollars a barrel, now it's over ninety-nine dollars per hour, which equates back to gasoline. Something wrong with this equation. While those food prices, I was having fine deals this weekend with the Dornoch. Ten percent increase in food and food shortages, but our supply chain is broken. And cargo ships are sitting out here in the ocean, in the Pacific Ocean, trying to get through the Panama Canal and try to get to East Asia. Something's wrong with how we communicate, collaborate, and coordinate for the good of the people. And I believe I could be the first to go to Congress and be someone who's going to be steadfast, own up to those constituents who are elected, to represent them, not my own purpose. It's not about the money. I will walk away from that job if someone tries to buy me out. I will go out in front of every news camera and call them out. My dad always says, "Always call spade a spade." You know the difference between if you're on a farm, what a spade is going to help is if you'll mess up the crop. If you don't know what you know. I don't want to mess up the crop, I want to bring the nation back as one. We all remember when I'm calling to City Fuller asleep, I'm being won. Where have we lost that? We got bored into our home. We all came to that point who are not the only them. Everyone who wants to be an American should do so. Those who are here, we need to take care of them and do the best we can. Our first responders, I love her, she seems to come over to church and protect me up there. But they are first responders that need that support financially as well as morally. And the military guys and gals, veterans, I'm a hundred percent disabled vet, but I'm not letting that stop me. And yet they have to tell me in a letter that, "You see, if you go outside, they don't care, because they don't have doctors." Found out that our administration wants to send doctors down to the border. Yet they won't treat the veterans who earned the right, get their help, care. And elderly, children, one, one more. We need to think about the whole enchilada, okay? We need to do the right things right, and it's not impossible. It's probabilities and possibilities. But many people are not willing to stand on a probability that we all try to get along. Use them perhaps to eighty-twenty goal, which I believe in Ronald Reagan's philosophy. And as soon as eighty percent events us all together and working those twenty percent that we still have issues with, we can get through this. I want to stop the inflation, I want to make sure that everyone, students that go to school, don't have to be chastised or be forced to return to what those once, in my opinion, slavery. I'm a Frederick Douglass Republican. Frederick Douglass had the air raid cabinet, was able to walk right through the White House. And was able to get thousands of blacks of colors, as they would call them, on my verses to pick, it says on top. Yet I see all the others of children. That should not be the issue of, we let that be the discipline of class, and parents are not domestic terrorists. There's something wrong with how we're trying to make this work. I can't solve all the problems, but I'm willing to be in it today. And with all the help of the citizens of Orange County. Now we have two districts that result of what happened a few weeks ago, that redefined it. This is now District Eleven, but I'm still going after Ten, because I'm in it to win it for Ten. And I believe that if you can win both Eleven and Ten, maybe you have patrons like me. Soldiers and sailors, governor and Marines are stepping up to the plate. I heard this now, eight of us, eight Green Berets cross the nation, who want to make a difference. And my goal is not to be just one, but I'll be a Mr. T in Washington D.C. as part of the eighteen to take down two. So I just wanted to let you know I love America, and I want you to consider just looking at my platform, go to voteCal2022.org. The reason we picked out Vote Cal is this, my first part of my name Calvin represents me. I'm a Christian conservative constitutionist and I have common sense. The A is for America, and I'm being America first. We can help the rest of the world, as I've tried to do around the world in uniform and outfit. But we don't have to deprive those here who need it most. I'm glad to see there's not many homeless land on the streets of Windmere. But we go just a few miles away, there's problems. We know that homes have been robbed and stolen from right here in Windmere. And right down in Dr. Phyllis Waterworth's house, my wife and I did, during the day, they took everything from a couple, everything. It's a sad state of affairs, people may think of this, robbed, steals, cheated. We need moral confidence back in our nation. I want to be one of them and do that for you. And the L, the L means I'm loyal. I'm loyal to that flag, and I'm loyal to all these constituents that are here, the ones that are not here. I will salute that flag as much as I salute, I don't elbow, I don't knuckle bump, I salute. Or like the image, I go, "I have nothing in my hands." But we are so fearful, one another, sometimes we let the color of our skin, that we let a content of our hair be our foundation. We're all created by God's image. We need to do the right things right. So I ask you again, to consider me, those who now live in Ten, we're on the side of God, the Bible. Tell them Cal is in it to win it, so to voteCal2022.org. And for my good friend, I have to call him out, Dan Rusher, I met him right on his back porch in 2004. And I loved what he did, and I love what he made you going forward. That's what his claim is on this new eleven district, and I pray that we give him the support collectively. It's one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. My solution, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Colonel. Best of luck in your campaign.
Thank you.
Next, I need to update Colonel Waste Pro.
Good evening, platform of this Waste Pro, Florida. Thank you very much for that. My fellow, I wish I could say it on Orange County, but I vote for you. On a separate issue, we're having challenges servicing this town. Town is having service issues, we acknowledge it. This is something we're trying to get from, and this is an absolute industry-wide situation I'm wearing. I'm not here to be giving excuses, I'm here to acknowledge what's happening, if it's unacceptable. I was here just over a year ago, listening to the council telling me how wonderful our service is. And in a short amount of time, things have gone awry. In a nutshell, and again, these are not excuses, these are real issues that my industry, my company is going through. And it's essentially, as I've heard beforehand, it's in relation to pandemic inflation. The pandemic has created an unbelievable supply chain bottleneck. Truck parts, trucks, what used to take two to three months to get, now four or five, maybe six months to get. Labor is, it's been a challenge in the last four years, it's accelerated by the pandemic. Everyone watches the evening news and understands that CDL truck drivers, as well as other skilled laborers, is getting tougher and tougher to get by. And this is also related to wages. Wages are skyrocketing, but they're not keeping up with inflation, but it's a challenge that we're having to deal with. Lacking fundages, residential fundages, more people at home, working from home that are generating solid waste at home versus at the office, complex, we work at, wherever we work. Some situations, municipalities are seeing in excess of twenty percent increase year-over-year for residential waste. So we're a bit in a perfect storm, if you will, we acknowledge this. This is something that we're addressing staff on a weekly issue. We can communicate better, having our senior staff communicate with the county manager, Dorothy, and others in regards to what is going on that day. And if there aren't any, aren't any good thoughts, we're just being very forthright, but I don't even know what's happening. To address the, uh, we want to, okay, I have a lot of fun in it. Gotcha. And regardless of landfill, I don't remember that one, but I think it's addressed, I think that's, Mayor, they have addressed that. Landfills are also experiencing the same thing that we are. I don't want to call any landfills out, I don't work for them, but they're dealing with labor issues, they're having difficulties in these situations. We can transfer drivers, which are basically past ACCL drivers, the wage scale is outpacing almost everything in our industry. So what do I do, do I just throw my hands out and say, "Sorry, it's not a problem"? No, that's not acceptable. Please be patient with us, we're working through this every day, this is something that nobody else can fight.
You, it's certainly been a ten issues.
There lies the question. Mayor, again, it's like communication, number one, acknowledging what's going on, when it happens, some days we're not, some days we want to find. But two years ago, maybe a year ago, we did not have the same collection group that we have. We've moved on for better iterations. We can pay attention to our hiring better, we do. We have addressed that, we have in-house recruiting staff, instead of doing the traditional means of recruiting, we're having in-house recruiting staff that tries to get ahead of, in other words, we're hiring more than what we need. And I'm not saying we're hiring everyone who comes into the door, but we are fast-tracking a lot of that, except the wrong we take, maybe a lot or two to really consider. So labor, we're fast-tracking labor, communication. In regards to truck breakdowns, which we are experiencing, I mean, that's a maintenance issue that honestly, I need to get back to you on. I know that it took paying closer attention to truck maintenance, and if the truck is down and another one has to be pressed on the surface. But then again, that truck may be laying on parts, and also the dealers that we sent a truck to bring in for maintenance, they're having, it's, it's a matter of fact, it really is.
So in terms of, maybe there are service issues. First of all, equipment, specs, that, that brings you Austin?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch the percentage again.
So, the yard waste, our, the yard waste, the yard waste, we're finding this, worrying on.
Yeah, I, I remember, I, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, it's probably, at my knowledge, whatever she says, I'll say it's happening. Um, like I just hear, I called her, she's out of town, and we didn't get her, her waste collected, so we don't know, you mean?
Yes, maybe they're not here.
Yeah, well. So at any rate, and again, I'm trying to minimize, you know, here, but this is something that's serious, and I understand your frustration, and you trust me, every hall or, we don't talk to each other, but there's only so much you can say. It's not an issue, we want to do the staff. And no excuses, Mayor, I'll give a, I'll give you a detailed action plan for you, and I'll get Mr. Smith, and that will be it for him there.
Some things like, you know, for people that were a little understaffed, or, you know, around, they used to see people at the end short every time, maybe rehearse some things. I'm saying that a little way overnight, but it's something for me, in terms of, I mean, trying to distribute with me, that's the situation. And think, from a staff perspective, message is out, and I guess we need to be done on some media, talk a little bit, or about the actualization. But I would like, in actual, in bad, uh, in, in. What do you expect with this nation, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
Councilman, good question. And Mayor, I do have to say, um, last, Ben, that he is responsive, I've gotten on speed dial, and text him frequently. So all my neighbors have me on speed dial, and, uh, he's not passive, he's always willing to talk about it, and he does keep some form, you know, it is a common, very common issue. But get upset when they're, are, I appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mayor, I'd just like to see an action plan, too, but other than, obviously, the town is paying for the services, and services are being provided, obviously, there needs to be remedies to that, so, you know, I'd like to review the action plan, and, you know, get a timeline associated with that action plan as well, to make sure we're not creating costs for services that aren't.
I would more agree with that, and please understand, we're not just weakening the charitable line, we can come back and collect it, ready, it is outside the scope of the contract, we sometimes meet, it'll be on a Saturday, every now and again. Material's not being left, we're not saying, "Oh, well, we'll get it next time," it seems like it later in the season, but I agree with you.
Yeah, I think that is known from our, you know, you protect everyone's interest, but also, you get it, you understand. It's that, where we, you know, yeah, just to make sure that, make sure that out.
A few times we interviewed in the past, doing one day pickup instead of the two, for writing the contract. And the, from the environmental standpoint, that is a good thing for the roads and all that stuff. The reason it's never gone through is because the difference in rate is only like six dollars a year. Resident, but it didn't make any sense for anybody to say, "Okay, I'm not dealing with only one day pickup." But you guys might want to start thinking about that?
That is something that, again, on our entire industry, it's all I can walk into, I can sell my X. But the downside of that is, as residential fundages are increasing, that's going to put more pressure on getting one hundred percent of every resident collected, and maybe applying additional, one third of the truck, or half the truck, or that, if you will, and that, that may affect costs, but that is something that can be considered if anyone can. Because the, the house count has increased, obviously, in the last year, so the town has gone with the pandemic season.
Right, we should, this dynamic stuff out there, it was, you know, we tend to, it's supporting, you know.
Absolutely. Thank you for your understanding. So somehow it works better. Thank you for your, uh.
Thank you, sir. Ways to, uh, comment here, our nation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jake Sterling Morton asked, who I'm sorry, to, to address where the tax culture that especially set aside for making tariffs. And whereas this holiday, Harbor Bay, serves to serve making a more convenient grass. And whereas Harbor Bay is now served throughout the nation and the world, we're as trees, the ocean of our precious fossil that we're in, in water, that heat and cooling costs on air, to the trip, air, use oxygen, by habitat, more. Whereas trees in our town increase property values, hence the economic, like talent, with business areas, and we apply for. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual reward. Whereas a town that proudly celebrates its twenty-six years as a reason, but say, now therefore I should provide there some Friday, April twenty-ninth, as Harbor Bay. In the town of Windmere, all systems, Harbor Bay, which is forever, some particular actions, and. Further, our adults, citizens, and trees, Latin of art, and will be future generations, they are the centricate of many, to be announced. Next up, we got the town of Windmere Municipal Quirksun, which is made in person seven. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of municipal clerk provides a professional citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government have other levels. And whereas municipal clerks are pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality, neutrality, and impartiality, rendering people serviceable. Whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of government and community. Whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of affairs to the office of municipal clerk. Through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of the state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, to know by American Windermere, Florida, recognize that we have named first, May 7th, 2022. As municipal clerk's week. And recognize that the Florida Association of City of Clerks, the Professional Association of Florida Municipal Clerks, is celebrating its 50th anniversary. Further extend appreciation to the bar municipal clerk, or the clerk clerk. And to all municipal clerks for the vital services that perform in their exemplary dedications of the state representatives. Data this ten days, twenty two. And certainly, we want to appreciate and love our clerk of clerk culture. So with the big plaque.
Oh, no.
Yes, I would be happy to work.
So.
Next up is, uh, old business and our consent item agenda since that mentioned the town council, I mean, of April 12th, 2022. Yes, sir. You can go through this, so, second. Need to punch a chance. Seeing none, we begin going with the most important.
Aye.
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 Other items of consideration is item I, sufficiently like water plant setback requirements for pools. Um, TRB recommends maintaining current water plant setback. Um, we did have a couple of speakers through this. Why don't we start with those individuals and then the others? Brad's presentation. Sound good?
Yes, sir.
Great, any comments on this one? And then to that.
We need to treat pipe of Dale Street. Um, I live over the whole of the packet. I wasn't aiming to go to the R B. We expected to see that they voted, uh, seven zero to unanimously to keep the setback rule in place. Our latest consultant has said keep the setback in place. I see that Brad was definitely on the new elements. He reached out to, uh,
Your, your friends, I think, I think.
They, they, I would say first name, sorry. Anyway, and that, you know, the official opinion of Pam, who are sort of on how we see, she's also on the, uh, like other advisory, you know, like explorer, let's call it. And he also says keep it at the setback fifty. You know, it's, it's hard to get some of these ordinances approved to get, you know, those strict restrictions in place to protect our lakes, to protect our environment. We love that. I don't think we should go backwards and I, I mean, I just know there's alternatives on the table, you know, it's not the direction perhaps wants to go. So I don't think that we should go backwards and take away those restrictions. We've already had people come before now to ask people for variances of 20 and 30 feet. You know, variance from a 50 foot setback, if you reduce that setback to 35, you're gonna have people coming in and asking to be 15 feet away from the lake, 20 feet away from the lake. It's gonna create a slow, respectful effect. The ordinance is there. Seems like all across the board, everyone's saying keep it. And that's my thinking. I think they should keep it. I think the council should take into consideration the environmental opinions out of them.
Next, both comment.
I think Brad's effort, uh, effort on his effort and thank you counsel for, you know, pushing forward that, that understanding for people on center. But I also like to say that I don't think we're going backwards by doing what we said in place. But I think we're making progress. Every time we change something, less than you go backwards. Change the thought because tradition has changed. And the tradition here is that, um, the lakes is, you know, the, the outstanding water water is recognized by that, our chain of lakes. But also, uh, Claremont's chain of lakes also recognized as an outstanding, uh, water of waters. So they both have the same rates. However, in Claremont, they have a 25 setback from new. And it's been out there and I feel they're like, they're ready anyway. We're the first one to do it and then say, wow, let's be cautious of another, another municipality has done it already. We can look at them and say, their fish are thriving, their lakes are thriving, and we're using that on this. We want to be cautious and say, hey, they're gonna build this, put a bulkhead on it. And the possible bulkhead, like deter someone, say, is it really worth, uh, we're gonna go back, also have to add a sea wall in order to protect a religion for that in the water because I think other, uh, another area, that was one of the options was that, uh, unless required, you know, a bulkhead in addition to a setback. That would still maintain and protect the waters. And the map we're on, uh, I'm looking on there, it's not a map of the water. We pay for everything, or not the map of the water, but it's been in. And so that's being, and then we try to protect that to clean. So I think by moving to change it doesn't mean going backwards, but look at the opportunity to make those things that make it worth living in the river. And let's change it if we can, hand set area and the value, which properties are on that area and so forth. We wouldn't have to be vanguard by saying, let's move it to 35 feet. Another municipality are at times, and they seem to be successful. So that's my feedback and saying, they've already got it, this is what they've accomplished, you're successful on it. And why can't you do the same for your cars? Seems like it's fair for us to, this is made of me. I don't even move backwards by making changes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Just confirm your address is nineteen B Street.
Yes, I think we
Just want to make sure that they're fully there.
Somehow.
Brad, it's, uh,
Question? You're having a discussion, Lance? Yes, sir. I have a very short presentation for you and it'll be an update. So, uh, my name is Brad Prades with which, sorry, I'm the project town manager this evening. As Mayor said, uh, what I'll be presenting to you all is the discussion with the R B related to the 50 foot setback. So just quick background, just so that everybody might remember, as we all do. You know, the town council, the direct, this to go back to the R B to have them, with this, provide a recommendation to the town council on what they felt should happen. So that is what occurred. This did go to that under April 19th meeting. Um, I will say right on your gen, I'll say right at the outset, it's in the dynamics you recommend to maintain, this manner as it currently twists, maintain the 50 foot setback was their recommendation in the past set of the zero. I will also say there was significant discussion and very good discussion about this issue, very well, there was actually. And what happened, the man was, I was a discussion, there was the motion and if you can answer, and I'll be honest, I did not choose to repeat the answer, but it was. But the answer at the end, so that, that was, that's what happened. So what I'd like to do now though, just quickly go through the background that I provided to them, so you have it as well. There's also some additional information that I provided to you all this evening that I didn't have to bend, that I did present verbally. It's now a little report as well as a little bit of additional with that. So just going through the issue quickly, um, if we got. So, you know, this issue really sprung up in the last couple of months because we had two variances coming in basically the exact same time from the neighbors. So that was one of them. And I will also want to say that you've been fantastic to work with as well. So we'll be back to some two part myself, and everyone about share the wealth, that's why we want to recognize that. Um, so that actually really was, the section really got, because at the R B meeting and review of those variances and then when it came here as well. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of consideration about it and, and like you all recall, with this case, that table and if you're done, you could see with this case, our other case at eleven main, Miss Walker, she is still in the huffing. Uh, she hasn't suffered yet, we just haven't, she's not quite ready to go back to the that really got this discussion going. Um, so in terms of the setting for this, one of the things we could look at is, oh, how many lots are we talking about in the town that are impacted by this regulation? So when we looked, we did GIS analysis and what we found was there's, we came up with 398 water plant lots here in town. That's roughly about 10% of all the lots. Of that, so that's how many that we had. Of those 398, 52 of those lots are one acre area one size. And when I say one acre, when we did that area measurement, it was from a normal high waterline land. So we didn't do it area without one lake. So 52 of those are one acre area. And then the remainder are less than one acre size. And on average, the average lot size in town of, uh, uh, is 22,700 acres. Kind of gives a sense of the scale of, of, of syntactic feed. So we also took a look at, for property, someone who knows, like we have here at Maine, on the west side. Now Oakdale is what typically is the distance we have existing from the back of those homes to the normal high waterline. Just to kind of get a sense of where that is. We, so what we did, we did take a look on that particular quarter, Oakdale. On that, the canal there, which we own down in the nature. And when we looked at it, it, it varied like, really, it was, we had ones like this property, Miss Walker, where their homes are right at 50. We have other situations within that area, as well as some other areas where they're even to 90 feet away. So it, it does vary, as I said, to look around the town. The other part thing is, uh, maybe I haven't seen here, but to recognize, we have other areas of town that also have similar limitations. Um, on the south side of Main Street, here on the side, we have also very shallow lots. Um, I actually had a call from a resident there from the evening last week, talking about her lot, which she has less than, she, her house was also 50, which would be beautiful. Um, so we have that. Um, Pine Street has a situation on many lots, and Second Avenue had some situation. So we do have this around town, in terms of relative shallow lots on the water, it's not just that one area. But I'm also good with the setting there. The other, I think, important part to look at is how, how regularly or how mu- often does this come up as we go through the permitting process with applicants or when they contact us and things like that? It's one of the kind of the rules upon in my world, and in Sony world is if you have a regulation where you're getting variances over and over and over again, and they get a proof, proof, and proof, that probably means you need to change the code because nobody's following it and, well, that was proven, so. But we don't have that kind of situation with this issue. So what we looked at, when we started in October 2014, so over this 70 year period, we've only processed five variances that have come through the process to the town council. Over that time, over that, that period, only five related to this 50 foot, foot setback requirement. Of those five that have been processed, only three of those are for pools. So we've only had this come up three times over the last seven, seven plus years. Of those three variances for pools, two of them were denied, and those were both new construction, new pools on progress. Uh, the one was on, make sure you're on the south side, and the other one was on the square house on the boulevard. Those were the two that were denied. The one that was approved was actually for the pool deck. This one was at 31 Pine Street where they had an existing pool, this pool deck is already less than 50. They were reconfiguring the pool deck. That's what purpose of variance when that was approved, though by, recommended to be run here, we need to buy town council. It did have no conditions saying that that deck in area had to be 100% previous. If there was a condition related to approving that variance. I will also just say that that has not come forward for permitting or anything on that property. But so over this, you know, since 2014, we have had this issue come up often. I will say in terms of phone calls or emails that we get, ask questions, we get the question asked a lot. Actually, we do about that same, about how it applies, but it's not very often we get a response where it's an issue or a problem. Um, but that does occur, but it does occur. So just to give you that context as well, it's not a heavy issue that we run into. It's just kind of the situation we have today is we have a lot of attention on it because we have the two cases coming around the same contest. So that's part of that. So in terms of the, the chain of lakes themselves, the Butler Chain of Lakes. Um, as since last time I told you about this, we, I've done more research, I talked to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, I know a lot more, which is, which I find is very important. So the Butler Chain of Lakes, they are designated outstanding port water by Florida Department of Environmental Protection. What is, what I think is so unique and special about this designation is the Butler Chain of Lakes is the very first lake water body in the state of Florida that is not under state or federal control, like a state park or preservation area that received the designation of that designation outside of, so actually it's on that list, and you see it in the background here, it's called a special outstanding port water. And what that means is it's not part of some other managed area. So it's the very first one. So then the other part to that story is, and this is what I learned in talking to the E P, it was established based on a drastic efforts of the residents of the town of Windermere. The residents of the town of Windermere, when the law was passed to provide for this to occur, they, they, the town residents put together the package and submitted, I'm sure the town support, that the residents spurred the issue for the designation and got that designation. So not only was it the first water body designated, well, that's helped with special, I told you, but it was also something that was really generated by the residents of the town. So I can think that, and that is pretty unique as we look at it. In terms of that OFW, and what they look at when they make that designation is if it says that that water body has significant ecological or recreational value. So it's ecological, recreational, which is basically what it means if you get that designation. Those, that's what it means. And when they do that analysis, they also do the analysis that they look at to designate or not is what is that impact to the community, to the greater population, basically, to that community? So they look at what is the social, economic, and environmental impact? So what is the, the cost of the and then they do cost analysis, then they look at the benefit and they do that, that cost benefit analysis. Comes out on the positive side and they go ahead and make that designation. So there is a lot of work and effort on that designation and that has been put in place here in the town of Windermere. Um, the other part of this is, and we have a little excerpt of the map, you can staff report and then show the website, you can access the entire state for it. They didn't do a really good job of the color. But the, the ones that are actually designated are kind of the blue pools and the dark actually. The other ones are just regular lakes. Um, so when you look here in central Florida specifically, in our, in our general area here in central Florida, there aren't many, there aren't many. It's the Butler Chain of Lakes and the Claremont. So those are the two, so those are basically the two here in central Florida. Everything else are north, east, west, and by and large, all those areas are within some kind of preservation or state park or state or federal park of things, or have any protections. So this is somewhat of a unique situation with this, this, this water body here in Windermere. Um, the other thing that you see if you look at that list is a lot of these water bodies are just the riverine systems. And where they have maybe some pooling areas and things like that, but as you look at that list, you see that overall, the majority are riverine type of systems, it was not quite edge and any lakes. So again, that's what I think does make this, gives it a little bit more special than it, with, with that designation. And what is the purpose of that designation is that it puts in the class of regulatory oversight at the state of, in particular, with permitting, with environmental resource permit, it's not affiliated to N P D S actually, it's our it was higher standing to have to be noted and maintained because of that designation. And then as the local government, you know, the expectation would be, this is my conversation is we do what we can at the local government level to support that and to, to, to protect that, those, those resources that are there. That's, that's what we're doing, we're asking for the waters. Um, as, as I was saying earlier, we As, as I was saying earlier, we, I did reach out to environmental professionals, but again, this really is an environmental issue, moving everything. So and, as you had previously seen, your office consultant, your lake consultant, she had already done a mail to the town council, related to the variance, but it still applies here. And she does recommend that you maintain the fifty-foot setback, she does say that it provides some environmental benefit by maintaining that setback. So your lake consultant does like that recommendation to maintain that setback. It's also safe that I also checked Orange County Environmental Protection, to, to their thoughts on the issue, and the other one, Mr. Hanson. And I have this in the back as well, that he also supports the maintaining of the fifty-foot setback, maybe as a crisis concern, but could, could have any potential to reduce. I don't have it here, I did have a poll question from Mr. Hanson. What do you think about Orange County standards, which allows us to speak on some properties? And I'm curious, did he respond to my question? And his response, and that was, it is what it is, and I have to look at what we have, but you have to, I think. So that's from, and then again, now I did see the Department of Environmental Protection, the town lady that, that is back there. And she also did recommend the town maintain the setback. So that's, that's the environmental industry response that I have at, at this issue. We also did look at the other jurisdictions, we didn't go everywhere, we have a lot of different similar to, to our situations. You know, the top of our list is Orange County. I will tell you, one of the biggest things that we hear a lot from all kinds of different people is, there's probably a hundred different lakes that, that Orange County standards is, I've heard, I've heard from ten feet to fifty feet to sixty feet, any like hockey. So what, what the real rule is, and with the part of this is Orange County, I'm okay to talk to them, is how they operate with their setback is based on the zoning district in the town. So in Orange County, there's many, many zoning districts for the residential area, which is unlike us here in town of Windham. We have one residential district, that's all we have, small, with one channel of water and then that. So how they regulate is based on the zoning district, which is basically determined based on the lot size, the zoning district. So if you look at, under the county zoning regulations, for a one acre lot size zoning district, which is our C E zoning district, which we have here on the other side of the lake, on parts of the lake, that has a fifty-foot setback for swimming pools, because that is the standard setback for that zoning. So that's where the property has to have a setback. On, on the other side of the lake, if we hear off the way down, on some of those incorporated pieces there, that zoning district, that actually allows a setback of thirty, because of what their zoning district does. But that is a pretty small area that's on, that actually comes to that. And then when we look at the zoning district in the county that's close to the average size of property sort of town, under that zoning district, it is a thirty-five foot setback on the county, based on that average size and when it's close to somewhere. The county also has a provision that allows for a reduced setback from fifty. Say you're in that zoning district that expires at fifty-foot setback, but you have a lot that is padded prior to nineteen eighty-two or created that's less than that. So it does allow them to meet normal setback, nonparticular setback. So there's a provision in there that says, if you're a flat-vested lot, and that you're less than a hundred fifty feet, and you're subject to a fifty-foot, you can do a reduced, because we do invest. So there is that, that part of it. In terms of Winter Park, Winter Park, they are fifty feet as well, it's town of Windham here. The difference with us here in Windham here, is they do allow reduction to twenty feet on a canal or stream, so not basically a canal. But that would be, that requires a sea wall and all that on the canal. But even more importantly is, it does, it's not by rights. They do have to go in front of the Winter Park Planning and Zoning Board for them to approve that reduction. The question I asked the planner there that I spoke to was, oh, is that process a variance process, or something like that, or is it something else? So it's, it's not a variance, unlike with the review here, the situation is a review that the planning and zoning board does to make a determination that the, the proposed pool at twenty-foot will not cause environmental harm to that lot. So it's, it's that specific kind of analysis, it's not that other than else. The other thing that he told me, which I did find very interesting, that he also said that anything in this Winter Park, that's five hundred square feet or greater, no matter what it is, has to go in front of the planning and zoning board for proof, with that same analysis of no environmental harm to that lot. So basically, a lot of things on the water in Winter Park that we should later review. So that's Winter Park. But another interest that I, well, I did it along the college, I was there, I, I figured they were the second lakes, I thought they were coming out of the sewer, and it was coming to the lake. And, and it's not an outstanding for all, it's not, it's just water. So, so that's their standard, but they don't have, they are not in this. So if I go through all of them, but only fifteen, maybe they don't have any such setbacks. The, the gardens that once, if they're over a hundred sixty square feet, they're thirty, the O A zone. And then Fairmont, I can say that that is correct, Fairmont is on five. I can say, though, that I don't think Fairmont and the town in Windham are prevalent in terms of the communities and the issues that we have, and our values that we have. The two different jurisdictions, and that's why I take away from local town. There's no standard, there's no standard, no one way to do it. It's what that local government thinks does the best to protect the resources, and what they think is best for the community, that's where this numbers come from. Because it really isn't a scientific reason for any of those numbers. It's basically just the idea of the further the better, with the ability to have more area for filtration, for it gets. But again, it's really a reflection of how the desire for protection that is really brought by. The other part that we also looked at, and we didn't actually have a super document before, and I should have, but we didn't. The other important part is, what does your progress plan say about this? Because that's where, because the progress plan, I know, that's your overall regulation document, what happens in town, inconsistent with that, so we can't do it. So we look to see what the progress plan says about this issue, and there are, there are specific, with specific objectives and specific policies. So in your constitution element, you know, then it has a general objective, like it said, the town will protect the quality of the water on this one town. But you have, your policy one point two point one says, town shop continues to support actions by public and private agencies to protect the water quality, quality of the Buffalo Chain of Lakes, that may be announced in order of water by the state. So again, that's, that's kind of the general statement again, but it just does say that the town intends to protect the bodies of water. Now, policy one point two point two is more specific, where it says, as specified in the town stormwater grant ordinance, lakefront areas are required to conserve intact natural fluids that provide us with filtration and runoff, stormwater runoff within fifty feet of the water's edge, only narrow paths of water. So that one was very interesting. Same here, what's interesting is, you know, it is very specifically worded talking about natural fluids. And I'm here in town of Windham here. We have areas and have wetland areas, but they are both, they do exist, you know, on properties, on the, at the lakefront. But many, many lots in the town don't have that involved, belong to the lakefront or the industry. So in those situations over here in town, we do have the intact natural fluids, we do have those references in that area. They are still protected, because we still have the wetland protections that are over the top of the fifty-foot setback. So in generally, with a few exceptions here on the town, particularly on that million dollar property, you have various, you know, develop on the property. Most of the wetland areas are with natural fifteen-foot setback, most of the wetland areas. But, and then what happens is, we then apply twenty-five-foot setback to that. So again, in most cases, that twenty-five-foot setback in letting falls within that fifty-foot setback, in most cases. A few cases, like, we, we have on that Nolia, it's well outside of that setback, that's out there. So, so we still do protect the natural fluids, part of that, and, and that's what we do here in the town. But why I think this is important, you have in the progress plan, really the, the policies to say, we as a town want to protect these bodies of water, and it's important to us as a town. So that is my open view presentation. So where we are tonight is what we're asking for the town council. If you agree with the development board's recommendation to maintain the fifty-foot setback, as they recommended, and I would say, their recommendation, this Martine, I'd say this correctly, because it was, it was very much driven by the environmental protection side. Statistically, it was, I think, the primary reason, purpose, and understanding that we really need to all that we can to protect the, the environmental conditions. So if you agree with that recommendation, basically what that means to us as your staff is, decision stops, and you continue on as adopted, and we have, we have been for like years. That's what we have, that we have, if you agree with the recommendation. If you don't agree with your recommendation, and you would still like to consider a potential change, then we would ask if you could provide us some direction, if you're able to this evening. On the way, we'd like to see a change come forward, and then we would take that back, develop the ordinance, to go then through the ordinance process, the development report, and back to the town council for your consideration. So that's what we're asking tonight, is if you support it, if you do, if it stops. If you don't support the recommendation and direction, that's how you would like it. So with that, I'd be happy to answer.
Brad, one quick question, and your, Martine's statement. So, so for lack of a better term, I think there are a lot of science to it, but we're assuming, the assumption is that more is better, right?
Right, and that's basically what everybody, all the environmental folks is calling it, right?
Okay, and that sea wall later may not be, so, you know, you could use some type of, 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 maybe backer scroll, but you have less, that that's not the natural progression to the water.
Right, yeah, yeah, I believe this view, that a sea wall would provide some protection with that.
Some true.
But, but there could still be the intent of the overall purpose. And the other part which I asked for, I said, because it has, it's answered there, is also with the stormwater retention. We've heard a lot about, well, provide extra stormwater retention. Well, the important thing I want to remember about that is, we already require stormwater retention for swimming pools, assuming they're more than a hundred twenty-five square feet, which they all are. So that is already required by these pools, and one of the things that could happen, especially when we're dealing with smaller properties, is the ability to provide very large amount of retention, in some way, that may be very difficult, given the characteristics of how much land they have. It could result in a situation where you don't have a pretty deep look to get that water, now, we don't know, it has to be determined in a way. But, so that stormwater retention, it's required either way, if you maintain fifty, or if it's a smaller, it's still, it's still required anyway. The other part, also with the sea wall, the sea wall in your current ordinance also requires a swell on the backside. It doesn't, the code doesn't give a standard on how big it used to be, it just says a swell on the backside, and to help trap water if you just jump over the sea wall. Again, that, that's already, that implies whether it's fifty or thirty, or five hundred.
If you have a house, you have a home per piece property that is built prior to the launch retention. And that property order received varies for who, they have to do the launch plus the additional retention.
If they do not, right, if they have a house that did not currently have extension on it, that's a big, that would be a part of it.
I'm gonna let Martine do some of your thoughts, and then Brad can share some, some counsel, some mission. Whatever Brad said, basically, thank you Brad, that was a fantastic report, a good job on all the homework that you've done. It is a, an issue that the D R B, I think, they, they approach this from principle. Principle is, what can we do to help our chain of lakes? And some of it from our, no, that's, it's interesting to note that two previous variance requests, there were votes in, a couple of votes in favor of reducing the setback by more than fifty percent, although there's one waiting for exception for the fifty-foot setback, which I completely disagree. When he downsourced, it was unanimous, but the board decided to leave the fifty-foot setback the way it is. No, it, it, another thing to think about here is, Brad, since we have three hundred and ninety-eight waterfront lots, and if the setback is reduced to twenty-five or thirty feet, you know, it's not going to affect just these ten or twelve houses that, that are on these really small lots, the potential impact to the lakes could be in the hundreds, because you're opening up a spillway of opportunity, pardon the pun, for people to build ulcers to lakes throughout the entire town. So we have to keep that in mind. And yes, it's odd, because the majority of the shoreline of the Buffalo Chain of Lakes is not dictated by the town of Windham here. But going back to the principle of thing, we need to do what we can to ensure that we protect the quality of the Buffalo Chain of Lakes, do what we can to do that. Our, our lakes consultant stated that we should keep the fifty-foot setback, they advanced it from Buffalo Chain of Lakes, as for our department of environmental protection, Ailing Sutton, agreed that we should keep it at fifty feet. And our own development board, you were, agreed with that, and again, that's where we should, oh, wow. I mean, you know, Brad mentioned, you know, houses being built and the one-inch, you know, that new houses have to maintain the first inch of stormwater. When's the last time it rained, and don't we rain an inch? You know, we had a storm a couple of weeks ago, and it rained one point six inches, remember that Friday, the timing?
Yes.
The lake came up, the lake, yeah, right, it's always with timing from the land. The lake itself came up over four inches, just from that one rainstorm. You know, you have to remember, we're in a valley here, it's not a flat plain, and it's sort of funnel. So when it rains an inch and a half, water, you know, you get four, five inches of water in the lakes. So it compounds that, all that fertilizer gets run off, you know, we have development all around, so to go back to the principles, and you need to do what we can to protect the chain of lakes, so. Now, I think that, that was the D R B statement, I think that was first Martine. Any additional questions, and, or, or, Brad?
What discussion did any of the D R B was had regarding each area's solutions? I understand, that's my concern, is there's a hard and fast, set back requirement, no provision for each area's solution to that. But if any, I would say was having.
They, they didn't consider any options, you know, Brad, a litany of options, sea walls, combination of things, they didn't, they didn't really consider any of it seriously.
As this Martine said, there's mention of sea wall, but really the focus of the discussion was on the environmental part. I, I will say, and I actually said, well, if there is always the variance process, if we maintain it, if, if the people that get through, and you had to demonstrate that there's hardship related to their property, and sometimes that's where, you know, the difficulty of requesting, they may it not relate to the property, they may relate to their use of the property, which is two different things. So, that's somewhere where that could, then, then it's part of it, ultimately it's up to the town council to accept it or not to accept it. So there is a process to that, to that to occur. But, but I, I, it was, it was not a high level discussion, it's not a, it's not a bigger picture.
So, I guess that's my concern, is, you know, when, when I look at restricting development on private property, and look at what is the risk, and obviously if I, if I was a water chain, I'd say, lakes is a risk. I look at, is there an engineering solution to mitigate that risk? You know, being an engineer, I would say, yes, there is. Um, you yourself have said it may be difficult to do, but that doesn't mean it's not possible. And if, you know, private landlord wants to go through that, um, risk mitigation, um, to buy his, you know, property that developed, uh, opportunity. I think we need to allow that provision, whether it goes back to the DRB for review or not. I like the, uh, water park provision where the DRB reviews that. They review the engineer departments, the risk mitigation to alleviate that concern. And I think if we go to the extreme of, okay, environmental protection of lakes, I think should be a little bit other work. Should be fertilizing, like fertilizer, application in yards.
We have that. We have the Orange County, yes.
There is your fertilizer. They made, yes.
I use a little less.
Oh, no, orange.
I'm leaving, like, oh, you have fertilizer.
Yeah, seriously, I was asking, because the Orange County is just, they had structure, and they were, they had.
I mean, obviously, engineers just, I mean, absolutely, and, and I don't, I don't want to keep that at all. If my, my question was asking a question about the seawall piece is, there are some engineering solutions, one problem that created that, that will be there. That is something that now, I think, is, is there soft skate that you do? That are on these, our, our skates. They, 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 they're, they're, it's hard. So, uh, you know, I'm gonna be smart about this.
So, would they have provision by this? Why would you have provision to all private properties?
Yeah, I have no questions. Um, did you talk to Clermont? Have they seen a reduction in water quality in any way, shape, or form with?
I got to directly discuss it.
Um, and I know you think that could be hundreds of properties that will come for variances here.
Well, there will come for variance, so those are, those that Claire and I remember are also properties that will argue about to accommodate.
Right, and I'm thinking probably fifty percent or more of them already have pools.
That's probably for the US.
Okay, and so, and also, am I correct in stating that the town of Windermere has maybe two percent of the coastal line of the entire upper chain of lakes?
Of the entire chain, I think that's a good plus.
So, I mean, I know we want, I, I'm all for lake quality and everything, but I'm not sure that we actually make any impact to the other chain of lakes. In, in that way.
So what would be your feeling? Questions?
Um, I, I think that, I had not heard, other than it's easy to say, yeah, it's better for lakes. Well, no, it was a hundred feet would be even better for the lakes, okay? So I think it was a bit arbitrary, however, this fifty foot came up. And, um, I, I'd be open to other mitigating factors, as you said, whether it's engineering or seawalls and stuff like that, to make it so that some of these properties could qualify to have, or, you know, reduce their setbacks. Uh, I'm not totally opposed to it, I understand, I really, really love our lakes. I don't want to do anything to screw them up. Um, but I don't think this is really what's making them get worse at this point in time.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, everything has a little bit of impact on the property, so it figured impacts.
Right. And, and Brad, you said that we're not the same as Clermont, and I, I know that the size of our houses and the financial incomes and stuff is, is higher here, but is, is there less housing? Is that it? Or is there, are they spring fed versus ours is all brown?
It's certainly why I said, Clermont, you have major fifty highway, they have all their merchants available, just the overall characters around that area is, is what my reference got to do with me, aren't.
But they still care about their lakes, they want that, that outstanding rating on it. And, and, and they may be spring fed. I mean, part of our problem is that we're a hundred percent runoff, the entire other chain of lakes. So, I mean.
You'll know facts, you'll, you'll hear the opposite.
I know, but, and, and a lot of that runoff, ninety some percent of that runoff is incoming from Windermere. All I'm getting is.
Well, you know, people are really hard on a lot of engineers.
Yeah. And everything else, that's true.
Um, no, you know, you know, to me, it's, I don't want to, if we're gonna go to, or look at the opportunity to screen your solutions, then, then, oh, yeah. Wiser on this, to see what are the best solutions for it. Using what, you know, out there in terms of those, you know, maybe there's like surgery things, or, you know, I'm, I'm, in most cases, seawalls and.
True, I mean, the research that I did, really, Winter Park's the one that takes that look of the structural and that last record. So I can have to look at, I have to, and get more detail about how they, they, they.
That's not a variance process, it's not something that goes in their DRB that's like special.
Yeah, right, and, and, and where a park, it's not a variance process, it's basically a level, it's a review level with a planning zone where, where they have to agree that the, the proposal that's not resolved in my part. It's what it is, so it's not a variance, it's not showing the hardship, you're showing the positive impact, not an negative, without a negative impact on that on the park.
I'm, I'm open to, you know, talking about a special case consideration, really special properties. Ones that come up, there is no awkward hardship, you bought a house, within a few years, you have a pool, it's not hardship. But, uh, my, I, I would not want to, I would not want to change the setback, uh, from fifty feet. Because then, you know, then you have all, if three hundred and ninety eight other opportunities for people to build stuff that much closer to the lake, like thirty feet, and that's gonna have a negative impact on the chain of lakes. As small as it is, I mean, I don't know what the percentage is, but, you know, as Molly said, uh, it is a small percentage of anything we can do, and not all of Orange County, you know, has a thirty foot setback. I know there's, there's a small area called Sandy Shores, where Brad might actually build a pool, because his lot, his lot is forty five feet wide. And, you know, his house is fifty feet from the lake, so he got a thirty foot setback. So, that's a special circumstance. How does kind of property here too? But as far as cross score, I would not want to change the setback, the less than fifty feet, you know. Without, you know, having to jump to specific funding groups to get it. Yes, the landing. Now, I mean, I'm going back to the principle thing, you know, in, the town residents can't maybe get the, the, uh, outstanding far waterway designation, that we should honor that, you know? Sure, there's exceptions to every rule, in general, we should do what we can to maintain water quality.
But, but support in, in the house, maybe for our rates, shoot, actually. Then it says, activities that just aren't not affected by, this occasion. I will include, states activities that are not regulated by D E P for water quality protection purposes, such as fishing regulations, setback, or restrictions on boat builder types and boat speeds, that's not a factor. So, I, I understand the, the perspective, but even though O S W designation excludes that. So I, I think we should, you know, continue to look at opportunities and, and solution sets for development in those, in those properties that you just can't get there at the correct point.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm open to looking at that, in general, in general, uh, and, I, I agree.
But you're thinking of it as a hardship, because there's, you're saying, well, they bought it, having us knowing they can't do this, so it's not a hardship.
Not necessarily, you know, the, the issue that has come for us, and, and also for previous, uh, various requests, there was no hardship at all.
Right.
You know, these are special circumstances, these are lots that are super small, they're built on land and canals that were man-made, that stuff wasn't here a hundred years ago. So, uh, you know, so there are limitations, but, you know, the technology, engineer, maybe solutions.
So, so in other words, you'd like to maybe keep the designation as big as a naked, because your variance process show how they mitigate it? And, and then it would work?
Yes.
I mean.
Well, if you do the variance, you'd have to, you'd have to get past the hardship or arguments. If you do, if you do an exception to the fifty foot setback in a element of, um, Winter Park portion, then they have the ability to overcome not having the hardship, but to meet whatever standards you put in place. And if you make it specific to pools as opposed to a regular structure.
Yeah, that's gonna be my next, this is only pools, we're touching.
So is there that possibility that you could actually use combinations that are some, on the setback, plus mitigation, that would be better?
That's the next.
I, you know, I just like, I, and I also want to do one verification, so if you're out seeing water, it's something, our, our, so it's a power. So, you know, I hear where you guys come from, maybe it's, I don't know, variance process. Well, so you need to, I, yeah, I mean, it's not a variance process, I think their park, um, bases their decisions on a hardship. Uh, well, they're not using variance process. You, you may consider, you know, you, you have a hardship just because of the limitation of the space you have, that's a hardship. But as far as decision-making, when park doesn't consider it a hardship, it just becomes a special exception.
Basically, it's a, I don't know why.
And, and they said, all right.
Yes.
That's kind of where this all started, you know, when we had these two variances come forward. They were variances, it added, it worked out the hardship, which we could, right, right? And, and that's why, and that is exactly what it's, it's one, there's a property that can't be hardship, and you see these things just aggressive about them, then you can see, then this, just like, that's, that's what we, Council asked us to do, done. But I think that, maybe you're not, just like saying, maybe thirty feet, maybe very much, but that gets you. Maybe you root for, like, you make it specific to pools. The next step is that, you know, the clarification, based on. So, I don't know.
Yeah, let me ask a question, I, I still don't understand, what is, what do we think is coming out of the pool that's going into the lake? I'm not, I'm not understanding.
Absolutely, and, and actually, uh, related to something, so the concern is that if there's a discharge, or something about the pool water, it depends, that if they get into the lake, that will cause water to park. Next one, on the sudden on there, she also asked a question about stormwater. And so the dots, they make something about that as well, which we have a response.
But, but how is the discharge?
Well, you mean, if they, if flood, then is there some kind of discharge and privacy, or discharge in the, you know, range?
Well, that's illegal, that's not allowed.
But, but they can, they can, or, and that's the concern of Orange County, as well as, but I saw also Mr. Manson did respond, and Martine said, with the, the great variation in lake levels, you know, the closer you get, the potential, even other way, where the lake is now approaching into the water body and that. So it should, it's the protection of, of the pool chemicals, the chlorine, the acid, whatever, everything.
No, it's primarily, then, if the lake is above the hundred year mark, the water from the lake could merge with the water in the pool.
That's Orange County piece, as that was our, our spot. Yeah, it depends on where the pool's located.
As a pool owner, I can tell you that you have to, that watch all your footprints and everything, that has to go somewhere. So, you know, that'd be, and it's very difficult to be, maybe, where you.
Right.
So, you know, where you're headed is important, obviously, some people might really want to be front of the lake.
But, but they do it efficiently too, right?
But you, exactly, it's, it's going somewhere, and some of it is not so great. It's all water, it's, or need. So, I was, I was like, are these kind of, you know, there is, or, you know, that kind of circle? But anyways, if there is something, and that's, it does have to, but scale, you want to avoid that. If it first bill like, before you're, yeah, question back. Yeah, I mean, in two thousand and four, after the big three hurricanes, my dock was underwater, like, a foot and a half, two months, because water was so high, so if I had a pool, except for my room floor, then it's, right. Uh, it's, you know, my pool would be sloshing back and forth with the lake.
But that's because your dock was lower than it's supposed to be. Mine, mine only had two inches on it, and we got an overflow of ten feet over the, the wall into the yard. But I see that, if there's a pool there, if the pool is ready to, it's water two, that's, if it were a setback, thirty feet, it wouldn't probably be.
Lot of big water level crisis that was.
Other than, oh, yeah, I'll be telling you, there was some content, for me, because I'm not, I'm not bow for two weeks, so. Definitely some content. Okay, you probably may belong into that. I, I think there was another question that was, that was part of this equation too, and maybe that was, sometimes we notice a difference between canal and the lake itself.
In terms of, yeah, in terms of regulation, at least in, in the park, yeah, so you see that was different. I think part of that is the difference of, you know, a man made ditch, basically. Now, yes, same, a lot of why you can ask, but, uh, the other part I would say, particularly in Windermere, that is where most, a lot of your, your use, that lots are, are on different maps. Yes, you have one, many of them are on maps. So, you know, I, I do think it's a reasonable, uh, approach to look at canals and the lake differently. I, I absolutely do think that's a reasonable approach.
I think there may be properties in town that are almost exactly the same as canal property. Um, but this, this third thing we were talking about, you know, we have to be, there's one thing, you know, that's, that's setback, and we have a variance system, a whole separate third thing that we, we would be considering. And I think it would have to be considered a last ditch, uh, very last ditch option for that particular property. You know, if that property has other places, one of them over here, and it's only thirty, you know, it's, it's within that fifty foot setback. If you have a lot of lots that are kind of hanging like this, you've got one for a pool over here. Too bad, you're not gonna get the perversion, quarter over here, you know what I mean? It has to be like that, last ditch, no other option, type of thing.
Right, yeah, so, in, in your code, moves handle in the side yards or the rear yard. So if you had a large enough lot with a large enough side yard, and they had a restricted back yard, and, and their house is deep enough to make it fall in the side yard, that would be a way for somebody to put, if, if they can make it fit. So that is true, people could, I can tell you, we had a very small, several years ago. So, that is true, people could, could be, I can tell you, we had a very small, several years ago, on Forest Street, when the Forest Street fell in, they had to put theirs on the side, and it's basically the tiny little back porch, because that's all they could fit, and that's what they did.
Going back to the question, town versus, you know, makes a lot. So, specifically for the two variance requests that we had, what is the difference between normal high water mark and elevation of where they're planning? Well, maybe that, right, what kind of brutal separation do you have?
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I can't say that you shut up, I can ask tall enough, tall enough.
About fourteen. Oh, you have a stone, I'll see.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, it's always playing, you know, I'm.
Come up to the microphone for the record, if you know the answer.
Uh, the current, why don't you set this, uh, with that, because we're kind of, we're in C mode.
The normal high water line's on ninety feet, and the elevation of the house is about hundred and three, hundred and two, hundred and two, so we're about four feet separation to get the normal high water mark, and the basic foundation.
And the proposed structure to your pool was, if, uh.
At the house level.
And for record, that was during one of nineteen Main Street, was also an applicant for variance, and then can you, right?
Yes.
And, um, all right, so council, uh, where do you kind of, sorry, from here, figure out what recommendations you want to provide to town? What are you thinking, it's like, we, Brad, not prepared for all of these questions.
I can not tell.
Um, you, you definitely need to phrase your mind, figure all this out, so, and, you know, I mean, what's the average ask for variance, and the?
For pools?
Yeah.
So, with that very few, um, ones that we had here, they, originally, they were both, was going down to roughly about twenty to twenty-five feet. So, there's, so about half, there's about a half on those, but we did have one in eleven May, and she gets her advice, probably, and she came back to thirty-seven, and her place. Um, on the other two, they were probably in a similar situation, looking to go down to about twenty-five feet, on the other two that were rejected, on the one that was proof of existing deck, that one was made for ten feet off the normal high water line, so that's, that's a very uneven property, so that's a big difference. So, we haven't had any, um, so roughly, they're about twenty to twenty-five feet.
Yeah, we have, uh, this month, at DRB, they're asking for a five-foot.
Well, yeah, yes, yeah, we have one, we have the ERB next week, it's on, it's ten sixty-nine West, West Second Avenue. They submit a variance to DRB next week, they are making some alterations, so they're just, it sits right at fifteen. And that request is to go to allow five to, and so we get forty-five, um, and there are proctions related to some, like, they are staying in safety agreements, if we let us catch rays soon as the stairs. But that is, and actually, their contractor, the contractor, so it says mailing to, to that area, so we have that in the forward next, uh, next week, the ERB can do on.
But I hear, I think what I hear is some reduction in setback with exploration of what, uh, these, as soft mitigation as possible, right? And it's just key. Brad, so how do they, so in Winter Park? I mean, this is where we start, how do we, I mean, how do they measure that?
That, that may fall off with, right, absolutely, I can market it, if that helps, find out.
I, I think the correction to staff, unless, unless, obviously, here it is. Look at the remarks, see what that looks like, how do they operate that, you know, have some of those boards that they need out. So, I would, sort of, a little bit about that, so to see what that, or see what those standards look like, living, is that we utilize have such a reduction in setback. Have that information for us to discuss further at the, so.
We have that.
Council did that.
Yeah, Brad, great job so far, and this is a, a real education.
I know, you can't leave my pool too.
Well, yes, I'm, I'm a, I'm a bunch of engineers, so I'm, I'm very used to hearing that, it's very true.
Thank you, and, and councilperson, we need to be back next meeting as well, so.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Staff effect. And then you listen up, uh, no, this is, or, um.
There's ways to be solid stating that, you know, if you have to be on setback, if there's one to be a pool, then they have to follow this certain process, so it wouldn't be considered a variance, it was like, look at what Winter Park has established, and what criteria they look at as well, to make sure that they're meeting whatever, you know, um, impacts. And then, if they had to take it to DRB and then take it to town council, so that's two, twice the effort for the public to commit and to come and, well.
Yeah, definitely, you've done well, you know, just, I mean, prep is, learning numbers, back on what, I mean, I extend requests, then. What, what, what cases there about, lines? Too much that, uh, conservative, but.
Yeah, because even if you're asking to, you still have to prove that hardship before you do that, that her.
I think that's, it's, it was, especially when you construction, I think council's logic on that has always been, there's a lot more options.
The DRB did not, or town council, they did not, with point zero three six, um, percent, and that was over in our forest, so.
That was, it happened in the White House, and then the conversation, yeah, and if you're forward and choose, then are very aware of the discussion during the town about this issue, and I told her. Right, because this is a very, I have a topic conversation, so we get very aware, which is walking into.
Well, yeah, my, my just, I don't, I don't want to do this, you know, you say, variance, because I'm one of the variance processes, it's all the property, but it is. So, but there's smaller that is that, that will get us. All right, team council, that was very good, thank you for adding that, so. Kevin, you have, uh, question, question, this, when do?
He's actually rescinded his application.
Right, he, he rescinded, I didn't see where this, and, I think in ten lots, if it does change, people need the new code. This blocker has continued to take.
Yeah, it's, yeah. Three, you, I think, yes. Next up is a resolution. This is for, uh, itemized, it's resolution, uh, number twenty-two, you have to hear for, document provides town, and resolution of the town, uh, resolution of the town, so the town, or, um, device, town personal policy, documentation regarding Florida, providing ineffective. This is our first reading.
So, I'm just, it's a resolution on the orders, okay, so it's about the, uh, the, the, okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Counsel, for a motion, petition number twenty. What's your, person? Motion to move that, set in my, council, and for, sessions.
May I, may I, I was, just, sorry, I was gonna try to speak out, but there, there are just a couple blanks in the policies for the local assistant groups that need to be filled in, so if you could just amend the motion to allow staff to fill in those blanks, I appreciate it.
So, I, and the motion to have staff, thanks.
Thank you.
For, uh, for working to twenty-eight, you have to hear for.
Resilience.
Resolution. Resolution.
All right, get your, so, and, and your friend. Rose is the second, uh, Rose is the second.
Yes, I'm friends with that, I just started, like, my, 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 so.
All right, um, any further comments, questions, or concerns? And voting, councilperson.
Aye.
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 Aye. Next up is appointment for historic preservation work on for Mr. Thompson.
If you do it, I also recommend that their membership be increased from seven to nine. What's that?
Do we have nine right now, or we need some?
They have eight right now, with.
I, I would like to make a motion that we accept, um, this, uh, application.
All second.
And increase to nine members.
All second, there we go, now we got it right, and we did that last one. Isn't it a question?
Uh, issue we had a reading, and then, uh, when you get the application, so, what's it, too?
Yes, I think there was another, wanted to go to nine.
Our integration, I believe, is wanting to go to nine, so we haven't received the, this notification yet.
Yeah, they want, they just discussed it, but, but their last meeting, but, um.
Yeah, issue number.
All right, all right, any further, uh, comments, concerns, council? Seeing none, we can go to the councilperson, Marjorie. Aye.
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 Appointment, uh, curious, next up is contracts agreements, that agreement consists, item number one, this is, um, it's given the JPF Development Solutions Consulting, this is for the affiliate, staff recommends, council, information, motion to approve, person, person, Marjorie.
Second.
Second, councilperson, any further comments or concerns?
Just a question, used to be activated, is the town's order correct?
Yes.
Any additional comments, concerns, questions, now, seeing none, we can go to the councilperson, Marjorie.
Aye.
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 Aye. Very much, council, and number two is JPF Development Solutions Consulting, this is for General Services, uh, staff recommends, motion to approve. First, Marjorie, for a second, sorry, second, councilperson, do you have, have questions, concerns?
The only issue is that the reserve, the amendment to, which should be to care unless you state, yeah.
Concerned questions, council, we can go to the councilperson, Marjorie. Aye.
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 And number three is IPO, number one, this is, uh, Kimberly Martin Associates, uh, Florida Division of Emergency Management, Transport Services, Sweller, Best Street. So, the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand two hundred and ten dollars.
Usually for a timeframe, but that, I'm trying to do.
Okay, um.
Yeah, I was here with, uh, teenagers, I guess.
Did you want to give us time on?
So, when I finish the, uh, designing perfectly good documents for Butler Investing at the end of February, so that was submitted by the deadline of the Phase One Design to FEMA, uh, February twenty-eighth. Um, they stated that it could be up to a six-month review period, um, we've been as expeditions as possible trying to speed that up. Um, so if they do take the full six months, you're looking at the end of August approval from FEMA. Um, so with that, and the time to take one or two months to bid up the project based on town council, E date, and a thirty-day advertisement. So, my estimate would be that there'll probably be a construction probably somewhere in the November timeframe, which is a good time based upon the dry season, but we are at the mercy of the FEMA approval process right now.
And you have, and VCA is not that.
The VCA, the first time the VCA has been completed.
What was that number?
Um.
More than one.
It was, I have it at the top of my head, and I think it was of, above one point five, so somewhere between one point five and two, because we were kind of going back and forth, um, with the FEMA reviewer of the methodology, and we had a couple of conference calls, and they've been very helpful. Um, so through a series of conference calls with the reviewer, we fine-tuned that DDM table, which is the damage table, and we were able to get those ratios a little bit higher, and we resubmitted those, and they're currently under review. Along with that, they've asked for a lot of things, like exhibits and things like that, so this IPO is for that type of service, as well as administering the grant process, you know, through construction.
So, the, the reason I ask you about the, the VCA ratios, maybe we utilize that if there's a process relations, if we get a process relation based on our estimates, if you have a higher VCA, you have a better chance to get it through. And, uh, if it's, and we'll, if we, we give it, uh, our, uh, your process.
Correct, escalation is, is a factor, uh, of course now, and so we submitted in February, we got some comments back in March, and we have been updating the unit cost every opportunity that we can, as far as, you know, tracking the construction cost, uh, but right now, it's, uh, basically.
Yeah, don't sit the board back next time, please. Can you change that a little quicker?
Yeah, no, it's totally.
With this, the reason I don't see, uh, Laura up here, uh, asking for the same type of considerations, because he had ones within the original scope, in order to cover that ramp assistance, these are above and beyond what their design, you know, was on, what was dealing with FDM, FDM, and going through that six-month process of doing the VCA and everything else. Um, but yeah, it's, it's very meticulous work, especially trying to figure out psychological damages and how much that would cost, in order to get plus, plus one. Um, but yeah, it's, it's, it's been quite the, uh, process, was that? And then that's what we were joking about, was, you know, well, how do you quantify that, and it's on our side, or is it on your side? Um, but yeah, we have gone through utilizing OCPA and other sources to make sure that we're even above that number that they need, and this is, they would have SARS numbers as well, to make sure that we're able to get that construction cost.
Motion approved. Yeah.
Aye.
Second, councilperson, do you, I mean, council, questions, all of it, so none, we can have, councilperson.
Aye.
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 Aye. Look at it.
Thank you.
Next up is, uh, we're going for the right consideration, this is, uh, one-one G West Eighth Street, Park, this is.
Yes, sir, um, as we have in previous, um, discussions with people that are living south of Seventh Avenue, um, if you notice, you know, previous to this, when we acquired the railroad right away, everything north of Sixth Avenue, uh, we were just going to purchase that, right, because, um, it was a lot easier to sort of purchase those, because it was, you know, contiguous, and, um, just that whole entire corridor, we wouldn't have to amend or change. When you get south of Seventh Avenue, uh, we do have some area where we can do some, uh, property swaps and negotiations with some of the property owners, and this has been very selective, because not everybody has been, um, amenable to the property swaps. And what we've reached here in the past was twenty-foot contiguous lakefront property, which adds to east of the properties, um, that are identified on the west side of Old Jermaine. And in, in consideration for that twenty feet of contiguous lakefront property, the value of that would offset the, uh, transfer of the forty feet of railroad right away. In consideration for that twenty feet of contiguous lakefront property, the value of that would offset the transfer of forty feet of railroad railway. So everything that we negotiated is south of seven has been in the twenty for. So you are adding to your existing main street and adding that forty feet. Now that forty feet would be utilized. For your multi-motor path in the future, stormwater, landscaping, so much of the linear park concepts that we see. At previous town council meetings and our workshops. But again, we've been very selective, like with council member Rose's property is contiguous with the board property on Tenth Avenue. At ten thirty six main, we negotiated that one because it is contiguous with Eleventh Avenue. And this one is contiguous with Eighth Avenue. The only additional consideration that they're asking for in addition to that twenty feet would be five feet to the north of the property, which you want Eighth Avenue, which the town currently has about sixty feet of roadway. Now the applicant is asking that because pre-subidity asked for variance in order to get a little bit of their home expanded in order to make sure that. Kind of matches what in the field the area with that variance was not. And I was actually having Brad here just in case if any questions brought up into that. Not saying that you have to agree to that, but it's something that the applicant or not the applicant, but the property owner is asking would be for the additional five feet. And I believe they're here tonight. Here's my, not only say, you know. For the additional area for them to build their home as far as making it a longer. The width would be smaller too, along the property line. But there would be, like, two would be as far as the five feet and the twenty feet, it would add the total amount of the area for the railroad railway to point forty eight. So that would be for a fair trade for the amount of acres versus the twenty four sort of value.
Five feet on the north side. That varies.
No, and they're, they're, they're not touching their pool, which they have constructed.
So the five foot would run. Big property for all the way down. The horse.
It would go all the way down on Fourth Street.
And sorry, what was your, right here? That it makes sense because of the amount of property?
No, I'm not saying it makes sense. I'm saying that that's what the position of the property owner is, is that their. Point is that the amount of property would be more equal to the land area that has supposed to be land value.
That's the, that's the question.
So that's like trying to get close to a fifty fifty?
Yes.
Like, you know, with the twenty five to all the rest of the land, thirty five you kept instead of twenty.
Yeah. Well, this one is different again because it's still being twenty on the east, which doesn't change since it's twenty five on the elevens, and it still gives you that forty feet that you need. To accomplish all the goals that you have within that quarter.
I see. And, and just so everybody understands, I don't think you mentioned that also in that forty feet, dirt main will be.
Yes.
You know, it's not just multi-motor path and whatever else you're putting in there for stormwater and also dirt main, it's sliding.
Correct. It's slice to the east.
I guess it's going to be a little meandering now.
Yes, it will. But, but again, the dominoes continue to fall, and the closer we get to having that entire corridor completed, the better. And then we would have a better argument, we'll see if there's anyone pulled out, and I hate to use the word limited domain, but that could be an option in the future.
Yeah, I mean, part of the issue along there, just so again, everybody understands that there's a lot of subject tanks up there now. So I don't know where to go, but they have to be eight feet from water and. Yeah.
That's the normal.
Yeah, that's why they get up up there, you know, because then they have a pump to pump the stuff up there.
I see the applicant's here, you can come to the podium, that. What do you do? Just give us your meeting costs? We never ever assume that you go ahead and give it to us forever.
It isn't that, because Evan really applied for anything. It's just a discussion relative to their interest in possibly doing a property swap.
Sure. One twelve West. It's not just to make an even swap. Currently, if you're familiar with the area, I currently maintain about ten feet beyond my property line. With grass and landscape, so this would be five feet of that ten feet. And essentially it allows me to build a five foot wirehouse. So that instead of being two hundred feet long, fifty feet wide, it'd be fifty five feet long, something more reasonable. And twenty feet on dirt main doesn't help me because I have just grassed it. I have a hundred feet there, then I'm going to use it.
Yeah, because that particular piece of property is long and narrow.
Yeah, and I get penalized because it's two front yards. So instead of adding the normal fifteen foot setback on a side, since it's considered a front yard, I've got two front yard setbacks.
Sure. It used to be originally, it was part of the house that is on main, and when the people sold it or whatever, at some point in time, since I've been here. They subdivided that and her house, before you were there, but I'm sure they've got that property. You know, I mean, they bought it from the neighbor. That's why the wall there to the neighbors doesn't have a setback, you know, it's right there.
Yeah, five feet of the neighbor's house jumps into my yard.
So it looks like, and that's around continuously down the Eighth Avenue?
Yes.
Three hundred and forty feet long? That's, that's five feet, that's like seventeen hundred square feet.
I think it's a hundred, a hundred off.
You're about a hundred, hundred and twelve feet. As far as the length.
It's gotta be more than.
No, it's, it's closer.
I'm sorry. It's three hundred and forty.
It's three hundred and forty. I'll give the wrong number. That's five.
It's.
Seventeen hundred square feet.
Versus sixteen.
And the town on sixteen. Right is a. On the long eight.
Correct.
Any. Is there a room of residents across the street on this or are they aware?
I don't think they're aware that it is mine, you know, since I do maintain it, because I maintain it, it was ten feet.
No, this, this was not, again, this is something that we want to take the council for, just if you've entertained that idea, thought I think, but never have not reached out to the neighbors across the street. Relative to, again, the additional five feet being acquired along the Eighth Avenue.
But what's that looking for tonight is, is the agreement like to move it in to discuss that, notify everybody who have that conversation?
Yes, and we can go move forward negotiations. We're just trying to figure out if there's any tail breakers in that. Meaning that, you know, if council was not willing to move forward with five feet, then it's your own twenty feet. But if you're maintaining that five feet, you reach out to the people that are based to this property, understanding what the intent of the resident is as far as the development of that site. Which would probably match the intent of the variance for the version. Then we can bring back the agreement to the town council, which we can have to prove anyway.
There are two houses that are adjacent.
It's Brandon and.
No, no, he's on fourth.
He's on fourth.
Yeah.
Who said one of the waterfall?
Yes. That will be after that.
I was assuming this won't impact our water master plant whatsoever.
If I rebuild.
Anything like that?
No.
Okay.
If I rebuild, it's going to be current to everything. My septic will be moved to everything.
I mean, I, I mean. Proper.
No, we have sixty feet, and as we've seen with Besty Butler, we've done everything we can and less than that.
Right. Was it coming? All right. Council, looking for your immediate vote, run this or just direction?
I would take the direction of the council to move forward negotiations with the grant or set forth and set this somewhere.
Right, ACC leaders, you have a comment, sir?
Even with our seventh world main street, one of the problems is we sometime ago said we have two continuous properties. On the corner, we allowed them an option of a front yard, a side yard along one of those streets. This property does not have a continuous major backyard. So when we looked at it, we said, no, 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 it doesn't work. But to me, the logic was that they should be allowed to have a front yard and a side yard, even though their continuous property is electric. So that's another option by this, this property. Well, it's so similar to a continuous block. Our language got very narrow, but it doesn't. Nearly need to apply this. It's that's an option.
AC.
So wait a minute, if, if we did that, if you, if, if that language were adjusted with the house, would that be? The need then of the next.
Well, just goes on.
Yeah, so they can do what they want and.
I'm sure that's what they're planning here. It's certainly something that we're. Option would not be just a wall of bricks.
But I would have to revisit. We wouldn't be able to have an agreement that would violate our code. Not all the proper procedures. So if you're looking at saying low to five feet, this authorized whoever they were trying to get in the first place. I don't think we can legislate that right now. You'd have to, again, either expand it to five feet, giving them the five feet, or. You would, they would have to follow variance, they would have to the same process over.
So we'd be sitting in precedent here, because we probably have other streets that may be required to have another people make one. Five feet.
There's a need. There would have to be a need for that piece of property. Again, this is not only because it's the only corner block that is adjacent to a railroad railway that we're looking to acquire for another motor path.
It's a county.
Correct.
My comment would not reflect the class or the map, which options in that property.
The other way would require variance. You're going down that route, and then again, have to revisit it. Okay. So, so truly, I think council, correction, stat, there's no objection to having this, this conversation. Need something on that. Major. Like all those basic. There. Any objection?
Yes, I think it's, I'd like to hear what the other aren't saying, but another than that.
Absolutely.
So again, we'll have to get back to the big hit that driveway and then come up with the final agreement to the forest.
That's it. Next up is item number two. Home field parking lot, age by Middlesex. Love to see. Or option? As we discussed the past week.
This is for the, and even the entire parking lot of that all, but not just the ADA.
I thought it's just the, it's not.
No, it's.
Would be really hard to maintain a square like that in the middle of a dark parking lot. The maintenance would be a nightmare. It is property that's owned by the town. Middlesex has agreed because they're going to be mobilized here to do this at the twenty nineteen rates that they're already giving us for paving, so. We're getting a good cost for that, and then we can put the adequate ADA parking spaces that were requested and brought to the town's attention. So to me, it would just be harder to maintain that square of, you'd have a lot of erosion happening around that, and that would be kind of a maintenance nightmare.
I agree, because we had that same issue in the insurance about sort of that square.
Little road underneath, yeah, it'll be, it'll be a liability issue.
We're also looking at just another area too, since we do have responsibility for the retention on this next to school. We're going to be looking at different ways of how to improve the look of that, so it doesn't look like a mud dog the entire time. It's the only retention on the number of teams of water, which seriously has little pick balls and basketballs in it.
Yeah.
Isn't it the, the back of it? Where is the redemption?
On the side.
It's on the side. You can see it. It's probably driving to town, you see it on. There's no water in it. It's usually just completely dry. It's the only retention on various water, no matter how much rain you get. But it still is a mud dog and it's still sitting here. What's that?
Still one of my friends.
Yeah. But we'll be working with the spell maintenance and also environmentalists to see how we can dress it up with some vegetation and whatnot, also the fencing to make it look nice.
Yes, because that's a cheap fence now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to change that look.
Yes, I agree with that. I'll make a motion that we accept Middlesex as a proposal.
Motion. Right, this is second from councilperson that, any further conversation or questions, council? Seeing none, we can go to councilperson.
Aye.
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 Here we go. Any council, Yates on the courts?
The, the two representatives. I mean, there's the last meeting. But I can provide.
I mean, they create on bylaws and then their board committee language, they restrict it up to nine. It's just a matter of making sure that they have a form, because when you go from seven, which is four, and you go to nine, which is five, that could create an issue, especially guys that are always on form right now.
They're not.
But they're not, I know they're not. Yeah.
So in the council, during last session, of course, on the train, and we had a correction. Just that she's there and that six minutes, you're just making that figure or type of fact. For the draft that we can. Just play. And they were set to date for our current place this year, Saturday, October fifteenth. My only question for you, Saturday, October twenty ninth. And then next year, I can put this on my mission to form right. So last thing, last little piece of my law.
To remind everybody, the public hearing for votes for our safety code adoption, ordinance adoption is May twenty fourth. Now, it's scheduled, there are some recent changes to it. I think this has been sent out to all of us.
No earlier than two P M.
Well, eight.
Well, and we have our workshops that night for O'Dell and mid-year report. So if council's willing to attend, we can schedule that workshop, but it's, it's at the discretion of council.
I think it's very important, I think the most bar we have there. Things taken a bit of a, taken a stack, and some of the already set are out there for. Hey. You know, as far as for our residents. How do you smart as fast as that's possible, that's solution to some of the problems. Council, any objection?
We, we would make it as close to the twenty fourth as possible because we did tell those that amongst worst of calls that. We, we would make it as close to the twenty fourth as possible, because we did tell those that are on first of calls that we're intending on taking the final action in June. Um, given the fact we're only supposed to not wait until September, October, before they see something that's not.
Right. Like, uh, yeah, maybe Monday, next Monday or something, or, let's see what works.
Yeah, just not the next day, it's not a worse than a weekend.
Everybody will be tired of that. All right, sounds good, um, so wait, uh, you're set on that, but, and request that, so you've scheduled something, that's, it's happened, uh. Further, we, of course. Yeah, the tree board, uh, is not extending to nine, reduced to three. Tree board had a special meeting last week to, uh, discuss the five hundred block project, trees involved there, uh. And, and we are meeting, uh, our regularly scheduled tree board meeting next week, with, uh, with representatives from the, uh. Just, uh, the number of trees that we are hoping that will stay, because we are very extreme ends of spectrum on. You know, what they're proposing first, but we're. Questioning that they keep. Some old, old heritage trees there, that, uh, we'd like them to work around, so, see what, and what they. Look on that. Uh, and the plans we've got, uh, show ninety six percent of trees don't. Initial plans.
Yeah.
So.
They were saving four.
Yeah, three and a half. There's, so. Next. Well, I mean, you got a lot of the trees they show are right there, they're on town, right there. So, and topsoil, you know, you know, there's, there's a good thing, actually. You know, the main thing is we want to keep as much as we can as possible, I mean, you can't imagine driving to town and just parking on, not that fast. Destroy the character of our town, and, and they don't want to do that, I'm sure, and we don't, we certainly don't want to do that, so. Good answer. Excellent. Further down my sentence, uh, project meeting report is, it'll be, it's, it's. All right.
Uh, yes, sir, uh, we had, uh, parts of twice meeting, we had two workshops, both workshops with, uh, the rest of Oakdale. Um, that's going to be taken to Long Range Plain in a virtual workshop on, um, May nineteenth. Uh, tomorrow night, we have my town manager coming at seven P M, we have the R B, as we mentioned earlier, on seventeen. Um, that's meeting for one pool bearings, on the twenty first, we have armed services day, that's a new event that we're, uh, many in town. Um, it was spearheaded by Anna Martini, and we're working with Diane, uh, myself and some others, and trying to, uh, work out the logistics of having it. Uh, typically, again, in Memorial Day, which armed services, that crisis, and the, um, military has been killed one, but not killed one, but, um, killed various wars and end of their service, and then. Um, but armed services day, pretty much acknowledge just those people, for all the people that are currently serving, and they want to make sure that those are forgotten, and it's on Saturday, so I think ten to twelve. And we're trying to work out some Zoom calls with some of the, uh, those that are active military, uh, so we're gonna talk to the families, so we'll have some other birds, some decent cream. Um, drinks from, since tomorrow. So it's gonna be on twenty first, and ten to twelve P M. Um, on the twenty third, I have to attend the Eagle Scout, uh, award ceremony in Mathisons, uh, I believe there's four family members that are receiving their Eagle Scout award.
In one family?
Uh, one family, so we're getting a plaque made, and we're representing that to them on the twenty third. Uh, the twenty fourth, as you just made a decision, we're ready to move that and bump it out a little bit, I do think, too, because I've been. Uh, my eyes have been dried out, and looking at all the financials from the last, or the first six months, and trying to figure out how they can sort for the next, uh, fiscal year. But then they're looking good, and they're doing a lot of projects done next fiscal year as well, so, um, we're gonna be moving a lot of their, um, Butler, Bestie, West Second Avenue, Pavilion. Um, looking at town hall on, we heard, furnishing town hall, uh, and then having days one of the, uh, pedestrian trail, and operations trucking, uh, is just gonna be. A huge difference in the entire area, uh, so it's gonna be a little nice. And, yeah, we did submit our Harper Fund, uh. Uh, updates by April thirtieth, which is not the most fun, uh, task in the world, but we're able to get it done, uh, we just sent for two hundred and seventeen thousand. Um, in recoverables, and again, as far as that one point four million, that was, uh, puts it down for the American Recovery Act, it's not like you can keep it, you can, you have to spend it for three years, and prove what you spent on. Um, qualified underneath the, uh, without, um, to balance those, we, towards, more than likely global water projects. And again, as Howard said, they're working on agents, or pursuing on agents, G P grants, uh, for F D M approval, so once you've got approval, we'll, we'll, we'll. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Brilliant.
Yes, so I am happy to report the, the brick roadway here at six at the roundabout, and then also at fourth in front of the church, um, has been repaired, that's something that many, many folks asked me about when I got here, so I'm happy to report, we've been able to. At least, uh, put a repair in there, so I've had a lot of compliments from people that are happy about that. Secondly, um, the town manager mentioned that retention pond over by the school, there's also the retention pond at first at Oakdale, which is not in good condition, so we're looking at both of those retention ponds, try to get them functioning correctly. Get the water quality better in there, and, and be a better treatment facility for some of the roadway runoff, so we bringing that to you. Um, the other thing that I'm working on is a draft for the assessment of town hall for, um, this building, so that, as the town manager mentioned, this can be updated and, as I call rehabilitated. Also, always with the historical perspective in mind, so I'm working on that. Um, one of the other things that is gonna be coming your way, that Councilman David asked about at the last meeting, is whether or not Middlesex would be able to do nighttime paving, and whether there'd be a cost to that. They've agreed not to charge us anything extra to come and do the night work, um, so I would like to thank the police department, because, um, having them here is the reason we'll be able to get away with that. So, thank you very much, D C, appreciate it. Um, the other thing we're gonna be doing also is the sidewalks, um, I do wanna mention that the milling and resurfacing of Lake Butler will be the first project we will get underway, we're gonna do that in the beginning of, uh, June. So that will not require night work, and then we're hoping, and working with P D, that we'll be getting to the rest of the, remember I presented ten areas, so the rest of the nine will be done on night work towards the end of June, we're hoping. So, lots of work happening and, and things happening, so I'm pretty proud of that, so, thanks.
Thanks so much. That's great.
Thank you, Mayor, as, um, the other, to find the bills, Brad and I will be looking at, at least we have data for them, if anything, we'll definitely start first with that, the, um, the law stop, which will help the town a little bit there.
Can I ask, how did it help?
The term documentation, now that folks will have to provide versus having, saying, oh, we had an arborist on that.
Oh.
Kind of something.
So, yeah.
Grabbed that up very excited, this song.
I think it is. This is a huge, huge improvement to what was there before, so what we had to deal with until this law now changed, was basically this an arborist, an architect, she just gives this town a letter. And has one sentence that says, this tree's a danger, the person's a property, that's all they had to do to meet the statute of exemption, they can't do that. Now they have to actually do a real analysis, consistent with the, um, I'd say, the arborists associated with it. Um, and they have to actually go through that official analysis, they have to sign it, they have to certify it, that they did that analysis, and have that report, so it's much more in depth. In terms of that documentation, as opposed to what we were experiencing, uh, with Tony and I, they would just give us a letter. So now, they can't do that, now it does require actual real assessment.
See the old developer trip, right, so they, they take away the tree ordinance, and then, uh, and so you can't have anything for your, you can look it back for all that.
Right, I think that, that.
Now we probably use our town chart, I said that, but.
But, yeah, it, it does give us a much better ability to, to be sure that it's done properly, because we all know it wasn't done properly by somebody, letting them.
Just don't think, yes.
Just wanted to let everybody know that late twelve, the sixteenth, there's something to officers to Washington, D C, to represent the town right here, and the National Police Memorial. So I promise we made a German family, um, after his death in two thousand fourteen. On May nineteenth, the chief and our honor guard will attend the Seminole camp, Police Memorial, and his, as your member, or you may know, that also driven into the police academy here. Means also a member, uh, a graduate of Seminole College. Um, so they've been doing that each year for us as well. We have, um, upcoming, an upcoming vacancy, Officer Kane, who's trans is going over to Sheriff's Office. So we are going to have some posting for police officer and reserve officer, we have, uh, Lieutenant Stefan, he retired altogether from law enforcement. Um, and, uh, officers like it will be retiring as well in June, so we have some other things there. We have, um, Detective Allen will be receiving the first honor of the year award by the community of one hundred, that's on May, I'm sure that's on May seventeenth. And the chief and, and, uh, we, uh, think that, and just to get everybody heads up, we'll post on social media that it is National Twenty Four Ticket time of year. Um, this is the, uh, exciting time for the police department, and the calls into the police department as well, so it's just that we post on social media, posted around town, that we'll be out participating in this national campaign. But as the public works director mentioned, we have a lot of, uh, upcoming road work, so we'll have options out there, and might as well to make sure that the road owners are safe. And that's, that's it.
Got a question, please. Uh, just, uh, back to roads, uh, timing, the joint did it, it's on sixth by the road, that's part of the Middlesex, uh. Anything to walk by, and then they come back and fix it, it's, it seems to be sinking.
I'll take, I'll take a look at it.
Okay. That's.
Sixth and Oakdale, we did that in.
Six, big patch, six hundred, the end of the, one six.
Okay.
Out front that road.
Okay. I'll take a look. Oh, 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 I'm so sorry. Yeah, I understand what you're saying, yes, I'm sorry, Orange County Utilities has finally got their contractor ready to go, that's some of the work she's talking about, really overseeing, they're gonna do that final repair. Um, I think of it as Highland and, and that, and six, yes, yes, sorry, yes, they are doing it, finally. I know. It does, it does.
Yeah, what do you miss to say, but it's, uh, would be, as to the personal rules regulations, it does help us with our regulation process and application, and that was a year of processes working on that. So I do wanna thank D C, uh, officers, and, um, and devil floor, Heather Ramos, um, and Nora, and Tara, all working together, trying to get it, put together, uh, so, took a lot, but finally, I'm really proud of you guys, it's a job, you know, it's a really big piece of. We've been moving forward, but, you know, it's all about, you know, professionals, the best people possible.
We have sergeant, uh, applications, coming in.
Friday is the deadline for anyone to submit, and we have two so far, also short out, and also hard.
And that'd be a test to you.
I'm sorry.
That's for the testing.
No, that's, that's for the, the deadline to submit your request to go through the testing process.
So do we have two spots available, or just one?
There will be one spot.
One spot.
Yes, and we have outside source, uh, because of the nature of that type of, of position.
Right.
House, so we'll use, um, Joyce County and.
Impartial.
Right, and outside graces as well.
Okay, good, love to the candidates, trying to, they should rest. Or tools or something right now. All right, uh, working from, from your end, thank you so much, and, uh. Brad, anything else you wanna drop, anything you know, or?
They took it, they took it, maybe, you said May nineteenth was the L R P, meaning that the town website's in twenty six.
Well, I think for a month, he's at the nineteenth, if this is twenty six, then.
I have it on both two.
Nineteenth, three mornings.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't have a calendar, right, 'cause I was looking at with the pen this morning, and Diane texted that it was May nineteenth, so.
Yeah, that's what I have, nineteenth, but it was.
Yeah, I think we can totally work that out, because again, twenty fourth was the date that I had town council workshops, and so it's free. Um, so, I think there are two in between two, which we didn't, and May twenty sixth, and May nineteenth, but we'll confirm that post as well, so there's no confusion that whatever date it shows is the date that students got, uh, it, sounds good.
Yes. And, and a lot of dates, so, appreciate that, everybody. Good in the order for the turn, and.